Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Village of Tuckahoe zoning board of appeals meeting for the month of April 2023. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nancy, please take the roll.
President.
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 I am present. So we have a, an agenda with basically three items. 104 Yonkers Avenue, special permit for a new sports and health gym. 1 Henry Street area variance for a new one-family house, and then 377 Marble Dale Road area variance for a new one-family home. And there are two of those homes. First order of business, we need to approve the minutes from the April the 12th meeting. Can somebody make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Nancy, please poll the board.
Member Fiori.
In favor.
Member Brown.
In favor.
Member Rinaldi.
In favor.
Abstain. I was not here. So first order, first item, I mean, is 1 Henry Street area variance for a new one-family house. The applicant present, please step forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Chair. Members of the board, Louis Campana, 8 Pasadena Road. Architect on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Has anything changed since the last meeting?
Nothing has changed.
Does any board members have any questions?
No.
No.
I have no questions. So you can have a seat for a moment, please, or stand if you like. The public hearing is still open on 1 Henry Street. Anyone from the public would like to speak regarding 1 Henry Street? Please step forward. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on 1 Henry Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I believe Member Rinaldi has a resolution. Thank you.
The application for area variance is requested by Raleigh 111 LLC, whose address is 1 Henry Street, Tuckahoe, New York, Section 30, Block 2, Lot 3B for relief from the following sections of the zoning code, 4-2.4.1, front yard. Based on this application as submitted, the zoning board of appeals finds and determines that the action taken herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of SEACRA and its implementing regulations. This zoning board of appeals is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed area variance application, and that the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and it is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Nancy, please poll the board.
Yes, Member Fiori.
In favor.
Member Brown.
In favor.
Member Rinaldi.
In favor.
In favor.
And further, applicant is the owner of 1 Henry Street, Tuckahoe. Owner proposes to build a new home on the lot, which is currently vacant. The lot is an odd-shaped lot and is located on the corner of Henry Street and Winter Hill Road in Tuckahoe. Since the property is a corner lot, the lot as determined by the Village of Tuckahoe zoning code has two front yards. If this lot was not a corner lot, this variance would not be required. Further, since this is a lot that is created after 1999, the front yard setback is 35 feet as opposed to 25 feet. Thus, based on the odd shape of the lot and the more restrictive setbacks, the applicant is requesting variances for two pieces of the footprint of the home, one being a variance from 35 to 25 feet and the other being 35 feet to 32.8 feet. It should be noted that based on the size of the lot, the applicant can build a much bigger house than the one being proposed. We find that the home and the proposed setbacks are consistent with the other homes in the neighborhood. Therefore, based on the most restrictive setbacks due to the corner lot and the odd shape of the lot, we find that the variances requested are reasonable. Therefore, recommendation is for the area variances to be granted as the benefit to the applicant of the area variances outweigh the detriment to health, safety, and the welfare of the neighborhood. The applicant has demonstrated through its submissions and presentation that has met all aspects of the five-pronged test to the satisfaction of this board. The granting of the variances herein is granted on the condition that work under such variance be commenced and diligently prosecuted within one year of the granting thereof, failing which such variances shall become null and void.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Nancy, please poll the board.
Member Fiori.
In favor.
Member Brown.
In favor.
Member Rinaldi.
In favor.
In favor. Very good. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Good luck.
Thanks. Take care.
Next, we have 104 Yonkers Avenue, special permit for a new sports and health gym. The applicant present, please step forward. State your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Dani Tachi.
So has anything changed since the last meeting?
Nothing has changed.
So for my own clarification, you are moving into a place that was previously a sports gym or an exercise place?
Correct.
You're just taking over for another owner, right? It's not a whole brand-new?
We're actually still sharing the front entrance, and he downsized, so I'm taking the side that he's no longer using.
Oh, very good. All right.
That little clarification there.
Good. Any members have any questions?
I don't.
No, nothing. That was it.
All right. Thank you. You can either take a seat or you can stand if you like. Member Fiori, do you have a resolution in the form of a motion?
Is that a public hearing now?
Oh, I apologize. Yes, the public hearing is still open. Thank you. Anyone from the public like to comment regarding this special permit for a sports and health gym, 104 Yonkers Avenue? We'd just like to note that we did receive a letter from a local resident who is requesting that the village try and get more banks and the like and less gyms in the area. But that is not our purview. They need to seek help from the governing board, the trustees, and the mayor. Okay, so did I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, Member Fiori, you have a resolution for, in the form of a motion for this?
Yes, I do. Special permit and variance resolution. The application for a special permit to strength beyond the barbell, whose address is 104 Yonkers Avenue, Tuckahoe, New York, Section 32, Block 4, Lot 3, for relief from the following section of the zoning code, 6-1, special permit. Applicant strength beyond the barbell seeks a special permit from this board to open the fitness center at 104 Yonkers Avenue, Tuckahoe, New York, pursuant to Section 4-6.1 of the zoning code. A sports and health club requires a special permit. It has been determined by Building Department that the applicant's usage falls under a sports and health club. Thus, a special permit is required. It should be noted that the space the applicant has proposed to occupy was previously operated as a gym with similar uses. Applicant proposes to operate the business generally as a one-on-one training center. This usage will have a minimal to no impact to the surrounding area, and we find that the use will compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. In applying Section 6.1 of the zoning code to this application, this board finds that several work sessions and public hearings that the applicant has met the standards for a special permit, and thus, this application is approved. Based on the foregoing, this board adopts a negative declaration pursuant to SEACRA.
Thank you. Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Nancy, please poll the board.
Member Fiori.
In favor.
Member Brown.
In favor.
Member Rinaldi.
In favor.
In favor. Congratulations.
Good luck.
Don't we all?
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, I'm not sure the village board has much say in whether the bank comes in or not. I think it's really up to the banks.
Yeah.
Good point. Thank you.
We're going to have a public hearing next time with the village board, a million people coming out saying, oh, the chair of the zoning board said you guys are in charge of that.
Pass the buck. Okay, next, we have 377 Marble Dale Road. Is the applicant present?
I am, yes.
Please step forward. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Gian. My address is 377 Marble Dale Road. I'm the resident and the applicant.
Okay, so if you would, great. Walk us through what is there and what you are proposing to put there.
What I'd like to do is read a brief statement and then just pass it on to the architect, who can answer all the technical questions. I just basically wanted to reintroduce myself.
Absolutely.
Okay. Good evening, Chairperson Ringwald, members of the board, and fellow residents. My name is Jonathan Gian, and as some of you may remember, I'm the owner and current resident of 377 Marble Dale Road, the property where this project is located. My wife and I moved in in 2015 with one beautiful baby girl, and since brought three more beautiful children to our community. Since we moved in, we've made many new friends and have deeply rooted ourselves into the community. With this application, we hope to add to the quality of life of our wonderful village. As some of you may recall, we previously had an application to divide our lots, but since, we've gone back to the drawing board and have designed what we believe to be two beautiful homes, each on their respective conforming lots. Given that our property is on a bit of a hill, a small half-story variance is being sought in order to match the houses to the north and south. Please take note that this half-story variance is essentially only in the front as the hills slope down, exposing the basement level, while the rear of the house would be completely conforming as the rear is essentially on level ground. The house will have a total of three stories, a basement level, a living, and a dining room level, with bedrooms above, which is typical for the area. The only other request is a special permission to place the garages within 10 feet of the street line, which, given that my lots have grades of approximately 40%, I believe is permissible with your permission by code. This request would essentially align the garages with our neighbor's existing garage. Other than those two requests, the rest of our design conforms to the building code. We believe these two new homes will add both value and beauty to the already beautiful street. I'd like to take questions, but before we do, I'd like my architect, Joe Crocco, to address the board to discuss the technicalities. Thank you for allowing me to address the community and the committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Joseph Crocco, 4 McDonald Avenue, Armont, New York. I'm the architect for Gian, Jonathan. And the basic, I think he spelled out most of the basic, but we're going to be tearing down the house he currently resides in. The two lots are conforming. They predated the change in the code, and want to build two new homes on the conforming lots, so.
Joe, it might be helpful to take the mic and bring it over there, and then we could at least put it up on the screen so the public can see the drawings.
Okay. Would you rather have me here? Is that better?
Either side.
Okay. All right, so, in an area variance, there's the five-pronged test that we need to comply with in order to make it approvable, so I'd like to go through what I believe is considered the principal points.
May I interrupt you for one second? You said there's now two lots. What are the size of each of the two lots?
All right. The lot width is 75 feet.
Right.
There are three tax lots each, and the depth varies from 135 to 163. So this is 135, this is 163, that's the property line in the middle. So they're oversized lots. The one lot is 10,600, and we split these. So, and the other lot's like, what, 13,000? 11,600, so.
Thank you.
The lots are both oversized for the area. We're conforming as to setback. As Jonathan said, there's a provision in the code that allows us to pull the garage to within five feet of the property line in the front, depending on the slope, but we're holding 10 feet to the property lawn in the front yard. So I guess whether the undesirable change, whether an undesirable change will reduce in the character in the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. No undesirable change will reduce in the neighborhood. We're tearing down one house that has a similar arrangement to the proposed. There's a number of houses with garages in the front, close to the street, with similar situations being greater than the allowed story height. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant may be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue in any other, other than an area variance, it's virtually impossible to build a conventional house on these lots without requiring one or more variances. It's the steepness of the lots that causes the need for the variances. Unique, different designs require different variances, which we went through a lot of in our study of the property. Whether the area, the requested area variance is substantial, we believe the scenario that requires the least, we selected the scenario that requires the least amount of variances, one, and the minimum requirement of a half-story variance. Locating the garage close to the front property line is not a variance, but does require the approval of the zoning board of appeals. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environment condition of the neighborhood or the district, the design is very much in keeping with similar houses on the block. Stormwater will be handled by the requirements established by the state, county, and local codes. And the fifth test is whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration be prevalent to the decision of the board of appeals, but not shall necessarily preclude the granting of the variance. Yes, the difficulty is self-created because the owner, Jonathan Gian, wants to make a considerable investment and upgrade the property and benefit the neighborhood. Being self-created does not preclude the ZBA from granting a requested variance. We respectfully request that the zoning board look favorably on our application. That's all I have. I can answer whatever questions you may have.
Sure, sure. Just the side yard. How close are you to the side, on your left and the right?
10 feet on this side, 10 feet on that side, and we left a larger, what do I have here? Hang on, let me see. We have 26 feet between the houses, which we intend to make a green area, also on the side, but it made more sense to put this space in.
So you stated earlier, and maybe my building inspector can clarify, so these fall under the older rules because it's not a new lot? So 10 feet is enough, side yard variance?
Well, what do you mean? He's conforming with the 70, the new code, so he's falling underneath the 7,500 square feet that he's required.
So what's a side yard variance for the new code?
He would have been at 5,000 square foot when he came.
I thought the new side yard variance was 15 feet.
No, I'd have to look. I can look right now, but I don't believe so because he's underneath the 7,500. It's 15 if you're in R10. The lot is 7,500 feet, but the setbacks conforming to the old.
It is. The setbacks conforming to the old. Right. Okay. Thanks.
So he's not, correct. He's not creating a new lot.
Right. Okay.
So therefore, he wouldn't have to fall in it anyway. He's making him comply with the 7,500 square feet.
Good. So you don't need a variance for the side. You're compliant. The only thing that you're not complying with is the height. So what's the height?
The height of the building is measured on the code, establishing average grade of 34, or on the.
Can you just explain what makes a story versus, as the chairman explained, height? Just that might be helpful for the public to understand.
They just got to talk into the mic, and they can't hear you.
The story is determined by the difference, and Michael, correct me, I think it's determined by the height between the floor above and the ceiling, or the grade, the grade around the perimeter of the building. I think if it was five feet, I don't know, Michael, but you probably have the code in front of you.
Yeah, so the way I see it is that the reason why he meets the height requirements, he doesn't meet the story. So underneath our definition of a story, our half-story, because in this zone, you're allowed two and a half stories. So that him having more than 50% of the coverage of that half-story makes him kick into another story. So therefore, we made a determination that it's not two and a half stories, it's three, if you're understanding me more. Because underneath the definition of a half a story, he's allowed to have a half a story, but only 50% of the floor below when you're measuring it. So if he, for argument's sake, if he had 100 square feet and upstairs was 49, he wouldn't be here. But since upstairs is more than 50, which is 50% of the floor, then he needs, it's not considered a half a story, he'll always consider it a story, if I kind of explain it.
I mean, if we were to push the house down, bring the grade up, we'd bury it back with the first floor.
Correct.
Having to go retaining walls, and if they get too high, they may, so it's easier to be lesser, of all evils, in order to go in this lot.
They have two.
Because it's very similar. You have that picture. Gian, picture. I hope that kind of clarified. It's a little complicated, but.
So it's essentially giving them just more livable space higher, higher up, is that? Because otherwise, they would have to shrink that livable space on the top floor.
Correct. They could do it.
They could do it. It would just be taking.
That half a story that we're discussing, and they can bring in the knee walls, I call knee walls, because you have, you're in a traditional peak. He could bring them in, but then you might get an alleyway of a half-story, where it would just be one.
Right. So less livable space, but perhaps less livable, usable space.
Correct. And then you got to worry about the seven, seven that we require, the seven and a half, seven, seven, eight height that he needs.
Now, this is a picture of the house that's right south of where we're building, the garage at the front, onto three stories, and then they have an attic.
You're not doing an attic.
No.
They got to talking to the mic, and they can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I mean, here's a house next door, garage, the first, second, third level, and then there's an attic, which we're not building.
So the homes you're proposing are no taller than that?
No.
Okay. Are they shorter than that?
I would have to go get a measurement on the house, but they're within a couple of feet, I would imagine.
Yeah, that's fine.
The same terrain.
So hypothetically, if you were to level the roof, not have a peaked roof on the top, would you then fall under the?
Doesn't change the.
It doesn't change it, the story? All right.
Doesn't change the story. I mean, it just lowers the peak of the roof. Like I said, we measure the height to half the gable, so off of the average grade calculation, so it wouldn't change the story requirement.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah, from the, how much of the dirt are you going to take from the slope in the back? You got, you have to even it out somehow?
We worked it out so much that the grade, where the first floor falls in the rear, the grade is very close. We're going to level it out.
Never though.
But the grade, we establish the grade for the house in the rear based on what the existing was.
So you're not going to need to put a retaining wall in the back?
No.
How much green space are you going to leave? I mean, there's a lot of green space there now, because it's an empty lot, one of them.
Yeah, the north side is pretty much empty. We're going to leave a very, you know, a big, there's all this.
No, I know. It's a pain. Take your time.
This is all landscape area here, between the buildings. There's a nice green area between the garages, and then we have 10 feet on each side, which will, will landscape accordingly, and certainly do something in the rear.
Yeah, I'm more concerned with the front than the rear, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, the fact that the garages pull forward wouldn't change the green space because even if the garage was in the house, that would be, that would be macadam anyway, so. It would be blacked out. It would be impervious surface, so.
Sure. You need the mic.
Yeah.
So the question in regards to the peak of the neighbor's house to the south, in essence, we're requesting, our application or the houses that we have designed would in essence align with the same peak of this neighbor's house, within a couple of feet. In order to sort of better visualize what we're requesting, because I think that's where we're having a little bit of clarity issues, is it may seem from the front like it's, has like an extra story, but that's only because of the slope. So in essence, what you're seeing is you're going to see the facade of the basement, where typically in another house, you wouldn't see the basement because it would be underground. But because the front of the property is exposed, you're basically seeing the front of the basement, which creates that story. If you were to look at this project once complete from the rear, from the backyard, sitting in the backyard, having a barbecue, all you will see was the living area and the bedrooms, nothing above it. So in essence, your living room and dining room area, once you're in the house, and you step to your backyard, you're on level ground.
Right.
I just wanted to add that.
On the north side, I don't recall. I was there quite a while ago. What's just north of this property? Is that green space, or is there another home?
Is there another home with the same, same? Another home. I was going to bring a picture of it, but they have a lot of trees, so you can't see that house. I even looked through Google images to see if I could find one during the winter, but it's the same, same peak height as well.
Okay.
Within, within a couple of feet.
Same design.
Same design, same, same.
Their garage is back.
That's the only thing. They have the garage underneath their house. So in essence, they're like four and a half stories, but that's neither here nor there at this time.
So in your opinion, this pretty much conforms to the neighborhood?
Absolutely conforms. It actually matches this one very, very closely.
All right.
Do you need, do you need any new curb cuts for that?
Sure.
One?
Which we may relocate, but we're heading.
All right. Any other questions?
I don't have any.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing regarding 377 Marble Dale Road. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public would like to comment regarding 377 Marble Dale Road? Please step forward. State your name and address for the record.
I have a bit of a question before I can comment. All I received was one-page letter.
All right, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Name and address for the record. It's all right.
Joe Sebelja, 374. I live across the road from Jonathan. Wife, three kids, all that. So what I received in the post was a one-page letter, which is a photocopy. It was very rough. It didn't give me any information. How do I get more information, like, so we can make a, give proper feedback and see if we've got any issues? How do we actually look at this and see, examine it? How do we get plans? How do we access this?
So Joe, the Building Department, open 8:30 to 4:30. You can just come down and look at the plans.
See Marianne and just check it out.
Exactly.
Okay, absolutely.
Yeah.
If you can just make sure you call her, because we have appointments. Oh, we're best buddies.
Yeah. Okay. Just give her a ring, say, hey, I'm going to come tomorrow at X. Okay? And just, just so the public knows, this is not going to be closed tonight, so you will have an opportunity to speak on it next month. So if you want to review it and then come back and ask questions, you're going to have the time to do so.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Hi, good evening. Michelle Chiore, 376, 378 Marble Dale Road, sorry. Just a couple of things. Jonathan's my neighbor. I live directly across the street from the empty lot that he wants to build on. I'm not opposed to him building houses. I do have a couple of concerns. When these houses are built recently, over the last five years since Marble Dale was paved, many of us have water issues, which we never had before. I lived there for 20 years, and only since five years after the street was paved, we had water issues. So one of our concerns would be, how does him building these houses supplement the sewage, the drainage on Marble Dale? My other concern is, yes, the houses possibly could confirm to what the neighborhood looks like, but my neighbor's house to, I guess, the south of Marble Dale, that Jonathan didn't take the picture of, his garage is way set back. If he's building two houses that are going to be directly across the street from me and my neighbor Marie, those garages are going to be right up in front on the street. The one house that he took the picture of, that's probably the only house on Marble Dale that looks like that. And if I had to buy that house, I love the people that live there, it's not appealing at all. It's an ugly-looking house. So I've never seen the pictures up until tonight of what the houses are going to look like. It looks like a lot of, lot of building, and there's peaks and a square, and then there's a garage that I'm going to look right across the street at. If it was set back more, and I understand why it can't be, maybe that would be more appealing. So just some of my concerns. More so than anything is just how we will be affected on Marble Dale with water issues if these houses are built, drainage and things like that. I mean, my neighbors got flooded this past week with the rain, and it wasn't that bad. So I'm just concerned about that. So something for you guys to consider and make sure that everything is in place if this gets approved. Thank you.
Thank you. So one second. Mike, why is there a water problem on Marble Dale since it was paved?
I have no idea. You'd have to ask the highway department, but if you want to do it, I'm sorry?
It doesn't make any sense. Doesn't make any sense. From paving the road, cause water problems?
We've had a lot of tremendous storms over the last...
But as soon as, as soon as the street was paved, that, we started having, they are shaking badly, we paved the street, the street, it paved down towards us on the, I don't know, towards the, on the opposite of Jonathan, and we started to, they are shaking badly, and tied up the side of the street, but when people get Marbledale, it's close to us, but part of that, none of us got water, some of the houses in the middle blocked, and others both did, but many of us have never did, so we're getting...
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have asked you to come to the mic. This is just my thought. Building the home, though, if they follow code and they have dry wells and whatever else is required, there's not going to be any runoff to daylight, as they call it. You can't, you know, have gutters running into the street anymore, correct, Mike?
That is correct. And it'll have to abide by the new county storm water management.
Right.
I can't speak for the sewer. We'd have to talk to Tom, uh, talk to Frank from DBW about, you know, whether the proposed one other house, because really there's one house there now, correct? So, whether the one other house would impact his sewer main or not, I can't speak for that. We'd have to get the highway guy.
Well, that's my point. Thank you.
I think it's important, though, to remember that it's not... He has a right to build the house, so we're not... I take all the comments, but that is... It's not as though we have the power to say he can't build the house. So I think, um, whether or not the house is built with an extra story isn't going to... I'm not an expert, but I don't think that's going to impact the runoff to the street, which is a problem that I'm sorry you're all dealing with.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. I mean, this board can't, you know, um, stop any individual from building, provided they stay within the code. You know, this particular applicant is asking for a variance, uh, which in essence is, you know, a height variance.
It's a half a story.
Of a half a story, right. If he takes a half a story off, he doesn't even have to come in front of us. And really, and as pointed out, it's really the addition of one more home. It's not the addition of two more homes. So I don't know how this is going to affect the runoff... I'm sorry, the flooding. I just don't... I don't... Okay. Anyone else in the public? Sorry about that. Not yet.
Maria Pellegrino. I have been living at 376 Marble Dell Road since 1978 with my husband Frank Pellegrino. Okay. We built on our house twice. We followed codes. Um, we had to follow whatever the strict rules were, and we were able to do that. Across the street from me, and I took pictures, I am smack in the middle between these two houses that are going to be built. For one thing, there's going to be a lot of heavy drilling into stone that's up there. How will I be protected from my foundation being affected by this? How will I be protected from, and my neighbors, be protected from a lot of trucks taking a demolition of a house down and then building on two houses at the same time? I have to pull my cars in and out of the driveway, which is smack in the middle of all this. So I'd like to know who's going to protect my foundation and my house that was built in 1925, '27, that we've improved on, like I said, twice over the years. Um, we've put a lot of money into it. We went from a two-bedroom to now we're at a four-bedroom house. We've probably almost doubled the size of the house since we moved in. We put a lot... We invested a lot into this house. If two houses are built across the street that do not conform in any way with what my house looks like, it's going to bring down my value and other people's values of their houses, I feel. We'd have no idea what this... These houses are going to be listed as. Is the builder going to then move away and just sell these as a profit? Or is he going to still live in one? Um, you know, what's going to happen? That's part of my concern. Um, you know, who's going to protect us from all of this happening? So, thank you.
Thank you. Maybe a building inspector can help us on this. I know in my neighborhood, they built a very large home and they blasted out a, literally, a mountain. And they chipped away for months and months and months. And the protection I was told that we had was take pictures of your house, and if they damage anything, then you can go after them. And that was pretty much it. There was really nothing else we could do. The individual owned the property and they have the right to build on the property. Uh, yeah, it was a major hassle as they built that home for all of us up there. Um, but maybe Mike can explain further, you know, what your protections are as far as damage to your home when someone else is building in your neighborhood.
Um, well, we can require or we can discuss whether they would need a construction management plan. Maybe that would be something that you guys might, as a board, may... It's a means and method thing we could discuss, but it may be something that you want to put your eyes on as part of this review process and let the public say, okay, let them understand it as opposed to the building department just doing a plan review and giving them a permit. You know, we can do a construction management plan on how they're going to remove it, what they're going to do. Give us a plan on how they're going to handle the removal of the rock, whether they're drilling it, hammering it. I don't know. They have to ask... You can ask that question of the applicant, and then we can require it um, as to how they're going to handle all that. The runoff, where the dry wells are going to go. These are questions that you, as a board, may want to bring to this applicant and let them explain it to the public so then they'll have more of a understanding of the way that this process will be as opposed to the building department, just, you know, you giving your variances and then the building department doing a plan review and them starting work. You might want to bring that to the attention now, since it's in front of your purview. That's up to you as a board. But normal processes, if they weren't going for a variance, they would come in for a building permit. We would review that, me and Bill. We'd look for any... If there's no variances, we would do our own feasible impact on what is needed. Where the dry well's going to go, are they 10 feet from the property line, like, or required? Um, these are certain things that we look at, but normally the surrounding neighbors would not know about that. You are correct. Until he goes there and starts hammering away or he's drilling away and he works whatever hours he does, which is seven to seven and nine to five on Saturdays. Okay? If I answered that correctly?
Yes.
So you can make the applicant explain it to the public, which may be something that you want to do.
Thanks. Anyone else in the public? Come on.
My name is Edward Brand, 97 Highview Avenue. And the only reason why I brought my computer was not to impress you all is because they changed my password on my email and had all sorts of issues at home, so I couldn't print it out on paper. So I did next best thing and I took the actual computer with me. All right. Um, okay, so Edward Brand, 97 Highview Avenue. I... By the way, I love your area. I love your street. That's why I'm here, okay? Um, so I commend the effort of the homeowner making this presentation and all the effort that has been expended on your end, coming up with this idea, making the concept, and trying to make it a reality. Uh, I appreciate the board for conducting this hearing for the public interest and our benefit. And I do appreciate the building department, um, in conducting your review. And as I understand, there was an interim decision that was initially denied? Is that correct? Okay. Okay. And I do think that the construction management plan with impact mitigation, as like you suggested, is a very good idea to possibly alleviate some of the concerns that the public has. I think if the public was aware of what the contractor was going to put in place, uh, that would help in... Thank you. That would help in this process and might alleviate some concerns. All right. My understanding is that the initial building permit was denied because the project was not in compliance with the various provisions of the building code. Uh, my belief is that the code was and is written and was developed in a way to maintain, preserve the aesthetics, consistency, and atmosphere of Tuckahoe to the maximum extent possible and keep the neighborhoods intact to as much practically, to the extent possible. Uh, to me, it sounds like compliance with town code is the way Tuckahoe manages and maintains the integrity and beauty of this area. Like I said, you have a beautiful street. Um, I've seen new housing in my experience, and as much as they have tried, okay, with the best of their efforts, new construction seems to always stand out aesthetically different in style to the existing housing and the character of the surrounding neighborhoods. Uh, and the character, and in my opinion, when I saw the character of the existing neighborhood was lessened, okay? Uh, like I said, you live on a beautiful street and should be very proud of that fact. However, at the risk of negatively impacting the character and feel of these existing neighborhoods, I am not in favor of any requested variance. So I wrote that before I came here, okay? But I listened to what you said and what Dr. Ed said. Okay. So I think there's room for discussion, and I think if I actually had a better... I took the time out to look at the rendering to see, you know, what... How it fits in with the neighborhood. My opinion would probably be a lot different than it is now. So I'm just being very hesitant and I'm just concerned because I like the neighborhood. I like when I drive through it. I like the houses, the way it's laid out. I like the greenery. Please, don't lose the greenery because the greenery is super important in that area. Um, so yeah, that's my comment, and I just hope that you take that into consideration when you do your final plans with the green space. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair, if I may for one second. Mr. Crocker, did you send us these plans on PDF by chance? So what we can do, um, I'll speak to the village administrator. What we can do is put a link and put it on the website so you guys don't have to come down here and look at it in the building department. So I think normally what would happen is if you go on the agenda, look at the agenda for the zoning board, uh, there'll probably be a link, um, from this application to the PDF. A couple days, yeah, a week or so to get that up.
And if we don't have it, Joe, I'll have Mary and the secretary reach out to you. Yeah.
Okay. When everything's... When we get everything, what we'll do is we'll put it up there for everyone to see.
I think it's a good idea. My problem with the rendering is it's a standalone, so I have no comparison. That's why in the work session I had asked, can you come in with something showing the other homes in the neighborhood and how this fits in or doesn't fit in? Because that seems to be the major bone of contention here, is that it doesn't fit in. And your argument at the work session was that it does fit in, so, you know, visual goes a long way. And again, you know, I just... If the applicant were to reduce this half a story, they wouldn't be in front of us. They would, as of right, be able to do exactly what it is that they're asking to do. The only thing they're asking for is a slight, you know, height variance.
Chairman, it'd still be in front of you for the garage.
For the garage?
Yeah, for the 10 feet, I guess.
That's not a variance, it's just a permit. So jurisdictional, right?
It's a jurisdictional, yeah.
Correct. They'd be in front of you.
They'll still be in front of you for the request. Also, just to clarify, it's not a height variance. They are under the height. It's a story variance, which is very different.
I keep saying height.
So it's not... It's going to be under what's required.
It's a story variance.
And then, um, just for the board to understand, not the board, the public, if you go to our codes, if you go to the Village of Tuckahoe, go to the building department, go to zoning code, go to definitions, just so you guys can familiarize yourselves with it. There's a definition for a story. There's a definition for a half a story, okay? And that will help you kind of understand why they don't fit under the half a story definition.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public would like to speak? Come on up.
Vivian Ma, 350 Marble Dell Road. I've been there 30 years. It's a beautiful street, but we've had major issues with water. The sewer system is from the 1920s. My house was built 1928. The sewer system can't handle a lot of it. The drainage, we have a lot of water issues, and everybody's worked very hard to correct them within the guide, the code and everything. And I just feel adding two more homes to the street, it's not going to be able to handle it.
One more home.
Well...
Taking down one and putting up two, so it's an addition of one, right.
Right, okay. But the street will... We already have a parking issue, so we're going to lose more parking spots.
Yep.
But I really feel that the town should do something about the whole sewage and the drainage, the storm drains. We have actually... Next time it rains a lot, drive down there and see it. You'll see it. And there's always a fire truck on our block whenever there's heavy rain. So I feel that getting rid of all these trees that are there, it's just going to cause more of an issue unless we address the other issues on the block. That's my... So I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I will definitely speak to the Department of Public Works and the... I will mention it to the mayor as well and see what they can do to mitigate this situation with the stormwater runoff or flooding. Anyone else in the public would like to speak regarding 377 Marble Dell? Don't be shy. It's all right.
Shelchi Odegan, 378 Marble Dell. So going just back to the water issue, if the trees are cut down and retaining walls are built in the back, just something to think about. Retaining walls, the runoff from the hill, will that bring more water down onto Marble Dell? Possibly, yes. That's... I'm not an expert, so just another thought. But also thinking about building, knocking down a house and building a second one. The Conanison van on gas and stuff like that, how is this house going to be built? Are there going to have to be propane tanks? No, he's allowed? What's that?
Electric.
Oh, okay. Good answer. Okay.
And I think that there... Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think there is a retaining wall in the current plan, just to be clear. See, they were saying that if they didn't go this route, if they had... They were looking at a number of plans. If they went with another plan, they would have to build... I don't remember what the plan was. But if they went that route, then they would have to build the retaining wall, which... And they would be back before us. They would need a variance for that. Um, I don't know which is better or worse, but it's... It would be a different design and they'd be seeking a different variance.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a question still in my head. So if you were to move this house back 10 or 20 feet, I think visually it would look better. However, if you were to go back 10 or 20 feet, would you need the retaining wall then?
That's what it looks like. I think you should move more dirt.
Can you... Yeah, I'm sorry.
I need the mic.
I hate to make you get up again. I really do, but...
If we push the house back, we're pushing it further into the slope. We have two choices. Either we raise the house up, which is going to make it higher from the street.
Right.
Or we start to build retaining walls in the back to hold back the soil because nobody wants their kitchen in a new house to be in the basement or to feel like it's in the basement.
Right.
It's a fine... We're trying to finesse all the issues at the site and come up with the best scenario, which seems to be the proper placement with the garage in the front and keeping the house as close to the street as possible and not pushing it any further back.
Do you know how far back the house to the north is? The one that... The one time I went, I didn't even know it was there. I guess it's covered with trees.
There's a lot of landscaping that grew in, but there's a long driveway. I don't know. We could try to estimate. We'll try to get you a dimension for the next time. The one with the driveway and the garage on there.
Maybe you don't even... You barely even see the house.
Well, the landscaping has closed in on the driveway.
Yeah, but see, your proposal, I understand what you're doing, and it seems logical, but it's so close to the street that it becomes ominous. It's this massive...
Well, one of the reasons to move the garage forward, it lessens the amount of rock we have to take.
Right.
If the rock is in what would be deemed the cellar, now we've got to hollow out more of the cellar, which is basically just rock. We have to hollow out the cellar in order to push the garage back. So like I said, it's a fine line between, you know, what we decide to do and not decide to do. It's based on a lot of factors.
Yeah.
One of them, you know, the last time was rock removal, which, you know, unfortunately, these sites require a rock removal. You just said you have a house on your block that requires... There's not a lot of good level one acre lots left, so we're stuck with what we're stuck with.
And we can't use dynamite in Westchester. New York City uses dynamite. I don't understand why we can't dynamite in Westchester, but we can. We got to chip away for months. It's horrible.
Well, chipping is more annoying than sometimes one big blast.
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
All right. You're welcome.
Sure. You need to step to the mic. Yes, you're allowed to come back.
No opinion. I just had a bit of a question. Um, this was originally three narrow lots, and from memory, um, there was a request for three houses before, which was rejected. Um, I think one of the issues was the changing of the three lots into two. And I see two lots here, so I'm wondering, has that been changed so that three lots have been subdivided into two? Is that what happened?
Great question.
I think it was reversed, wasn't it, not?
Yeah, I think what happened was, I think there were five or six lots. And if they were going to build three houses, they would have had to rearrange those lot lines to fit the three houses. Since they're only building the two houses, they can arrange the lot lines without moving them, the tax lots, without moving them, but just merge them. So they don't have to come...
Just combine them, but the lots...
Exactly. Where they would have had to move the lot lines and have to go to the planning to move the lot lines. They don't need to do that here since there's only going to be two houses.
And because the lot lines haven't changed, they're still subject to the previous...
Exactly correct.
It's actually what we said last time. A lot of... I don't know. I'm sure a lot of you were here last time. I think it was my first meeting and I was wondering what I was walking into. But, um, but I... That was what I think a lot of the board members repeatedly asked, which was, why are you rearranging the tax lines when you could do, as of right, two houses?
And that hasn't changed.
Right, correct.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public would like to speak? Your last chance. Until next month.
Until next month.
All right, thank you. I will then... Any other questions?
No.
Before I close...
Just one before you do this. I don't know when we're going to vote on this, but we're not here in August. So if we don't do this within two months, you have to come back again in September. Just to hold it out there.
Chairman, if you are going to make any recommendations, you might want to make them. If you are going to ask them to do that construction plan or something. This way we're not back next month asking them to do it. If you're not going to ask them, that's fine. I don't care. I just want to try to... You know, if you have any questions, obviously you've already stated to the applicant to put some elevations together with the right and left side, um, of the homes so that they can see if it fits more feasible into the property. But if there's anything else that you want to do, you might want to just let them know.
How about a plan for the back, how to take part of the slope out? Yeah? How to take part of the slope, what are you going to use? Stuff like that.
Yeah, I'm not going to ask them to get into the drainage because that's, you know, your purview and they have to follow code and they can't run to daylight and all that with the water, so... And as far as the flooding, you know, that's not really all purview, but I already promised I'll reach out to the Department of Public Works and the mayor to see what they can do as far as flooding on the block. But that doesn't really pertain to this particular variance. Uh, but yes, I personally would like to have some schematics or drawings that show how the proposed homes will fit in comparison to the other homes nearby. I would also like some kind of a plan to move the house back. I think if you move the back as, you know, even 10 feet, it would make a big difference. I mean, it's right up on the street level. And to me, it's, I'll call looming rather than setback. I think it would fit into the neighborhood a lot nicer. I don't know how to ask this, and I ask it all the time. I've asked it of the other builders, you know, Murray's and Seminera's, and please leave as much green space as you can. Uh, they usually promise to do it and they don't. Um, but whatever you can do to leave green space, you know, if you could put that in the plans... I mean, 10 feet on each side's not a lot, but you have 20 feet in between. You know, give us some idea of what you're going to put to keep as much greenery, trees, not shrubs, you know, trees in particular. I'm very passionate about trees. Um, I think that would help, and I think it would help the public to be more comfortable that it would fit more into the neighborhood. Yes, the garage front in particular. Not the main house. How are you going to eliminate the garage? I don't have an answer for that, so, right. Right. But if you're tucking under, you're going to ask for another half story going up?
Yeah, I think, I mean, if this is possible, and I don't know how much, um... You've looked at the details of the civil and geotechnical engineering at this point for this, um, plan, but it would be helpful to know what the trade-off would be if you were to hypothetically move the house back 10 feet, you know, how much incremental earthwork that would take to go further back. Um, would be helpful because it looks like there is a trade-off that needs to be decided here and to have maybe some numbers and a visualization there would be helpful.
And maybe just say, also, I think you mentioned that, which I think everyone can understand in any construction, but here with all the rock, what could you find? Like, just so, you know, ways that it could go sideways very fast as you're excavating back? Because I think that too would be helpful. And you're not going to know, but just in your experience, and no one will hold you to it, but just illustrating what... How that could play out if you start excavating back further into the rock.
Okay. If you could, please step to the mic. We're not going to torture him anymore.
Just to point out on that point, I mean, I'll address all the points in the next one, but real quickly on that one. Uh, my house where I currently live was excavated almost 100, more than 100 years ago. And they've done... It seemed to be quite easily they were able to excavate back and create the lot that my house sits on now. So we haven't done any testing or drilling to determine, but I would... Based on that, I would be under the assumption it's fairly easy. And plus, the entire street on that side has been built into the hill somewhat.
How far back is your existing house? Because I've driven by it, it seems a lot further back than this house. 35 feet.
35 on the stairway. I just...
So that would help, yeah. If you could give us an idea of what it would take to move the house back.
My garage is peaceful, but my house, the actual facade of the house, the existing house, 35 feet from the property line.
And the garage is how far back, roughly?
20s, my guess.
So it's another 10?
I measured 20, like a long time ago, but not for the purpose of this, for another reason. That's why I remembered the number. Existing? Yeah.
All right. That would help.
I would like one clarification.
Sure.
Mr. Laurie asked for... He wanted to know something about the rock, the movement of the rock in the back, in the rear. I just want a clarification on what you were asking so that I can...
Yeah, just like some kind of plan, if you're going to do any drilling and anything.
In the rear, in the very specific...
Is that where you're going, in the rear, right?
It's in the front.
Yeah. Oh, the rear, oh, okay. So do nothing in the back?
Pretty much level.
Oh, okay. All right. I thought you were going to do something back there too. Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so I'm going to make a motion to leave the public hearing open until our next meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing no other business, I will make a motion to close this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Tuckahoe.
Night.